Good evening. I called the city council meeting for Wednesday, May 10th, 2023 to order. At this time, let's start our meeting off with a moment of silence. All right. Alderman Dunn, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Brian, would you please call our roll?
Dunn?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Grip?
Here.
Condon?
Here.
Cornet?
Here.
Dickman?
Here.
Jobchin?
Here.
And Ortiz?
Here.
Ten?
Present, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Good evening. As we begin this meeting of the city council, I would like again to welcome all of those in attendance and all of those who are viewing the meeting on your computer or your mobile device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions. Please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you are also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region as city council meetings are recorded and available on the City of Davenport website for viewing. We are very happy that you're participating in your city government, and we ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all citizens. For those in attendance and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. At this time, we ask you to turn off or silence your cell phones and other electronic handheld devices so that they don't interfere with anyone who may be speaking. If you wish to address the council on a specific item on the discussion agenda, you are encouraged to do so during that discussion item. You will have an opportunity to address the city council on items not on the agenda under the public with business portion of the meeting, which will occur towards the end. When addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by the mayor, and speak to the council as a body and not to any single member. You are asked to limit your remarks to no more than five minutes. I ask that everyone observe, and I know that you all will, the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Thank you. So with that, will an Alderman move approval of the city council meeting minutes for April 26, 2023?
So moved.
There's a motion in a favor, or a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Any opposed, same sign? The minutes have been approved. Is there a city administrator update this evening?
Nothing this evening, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Now will an Alderman move approval of the report on committee of the whole for May 3rd, 2023? There's a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Are there any opposed? That report is approved. We have two appointments and two proclamations this evening. I will read the appointments and ask for approval. The first appointment is for the Design Review Board. Lana Tilka is a new appointment. And the second is for the Riverfront Improvement Commission, and Scott Pettis is a new appointment from the Second Ward. I'll accept a motion to approve these appointments. There's a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Those appointments are approved. Thank you to these two individuals for stepping up to serve on the Design Review Board and the Riverfront Improvement Commission. We appreciate your willingness to serve the people of Davenport. And next, we have our two proclamations. The first one is for National Police Week, May 14 through the 20th, 2023, and Peace Officer Memorial Day. Alderman Jobchin is going to read this proclamation.
The proclamation reads, whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed the first proclamation recognizing May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week, and whereas, City of Davenport police officers protect and care for the well-being of our community while serving with integrity, fairness, competency, and professionalism, and whereas, through their courageous work and dedicated efforts, our officers provide the citizens of Davenport a safe, stable, and welcoming place to live, and whereas, we honor and celebrate the men and women of the Davenport Police Department for their noble commitment to keep our community safe and recognize the sacrifices made by the officers and their families, and whereas, the City of Davenport remembers and gives special recognition to the officers who have fallen in the line of duty, and now therefore, we, Mayor Mike Mattson and the Davenport City Council, do hereby declare our appreciation to all law enforcement officers and honor those who have fallen in the line of duty and proclaim the week of May 14 through 20th, 2023, as National Police Week and May 15th, 2023, as Peace Officer Memorial Day. And the City of Davenport urge all citizens to join us in recognition, the dedication and sacrifices made by all law enforcement officers. The City of Davenport Sky Bridge will display the color blue from Monday, May 15th, through Sunday, May 21st, in recognition of National Police Week and Peace Officer Memorial Day in Davenport, dated this 10th day of May, 2023. I move the proclamation.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? The proclamation has been approved, and here to accept is Davenport Police Department's Chief, Jeffrey Bladell.
Thank you. Thank you. Your Honor and elected officials, Jeff Bladell, your chief, just want to thank you guys for your continued support for law enforcement. As we know, it's a very, very dangerous profession as we go into Memorial Week next week. This year, 559 officers are being added to the memorial who lost their lives in 2022, and already this year, we had 39 officers who have died. So Monday, we kick off our memorial. We honor the four officers that served our great community here in Davenport at 10:00 a.m. If you can join us, we do have four families that we'll be sitting with and starting our memorial. So again, we appreciate all your support. We couldn't do the jobs that we do without our elected officials, without our city officials, and without our community. So we appreciate everything you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Our second proclamation this evening is National Public Works Week, May 21st through the 27th, and Alderman Dunn will be reading.
Thank you, Your Honor. The proclamation reads, whereas the services provided in our community by the Public Works and Development and Neighborhood Services Departments are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support and understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of the public work system and programs such as building, rental, and environmental inspection, composting, engineering, facility maintenance, fleet maintenance, forestry, natural resources, solid waste collection, sewer and street maintenance, parking, transit, and water pollution control, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on those facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public work staff, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff both the Public Works and Development Neighborhood Services Departments is materially influenced by the citizens and council's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. And now therefore, we, Mayor Mike Mattson and the Davenport City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21st through May 27th, 2023, as Public Works Week, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in the Public Works and Neighborhood Services and to recognize the contributions made to improve the health, safety, comfort, and quality of life for all residents in Davenport, dated this 10th day of May, 2023, and I move the proclamation.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign? And as the proclamation is passed, and I believe Nicole Gleason from Public Works, our Public Works Director is here.
Thank you. Thank you so much for this recognition. We will be holding our annual Public Works Week lunch a little bit late this year. I'm trying to just get flooding wrapped up and cleaned up before we do that, but really appreciate your support and recognition. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That concludes our proclamation portion of tonight's council meeting, and now we have one presentation. It is for the 2023 Fire Explorers Recognition. So what we're going to do is we're going to have Chief Carlston and Lieutenant Solis come up, and Lieutenant Solis is going to talk about this program, and then I will join them to recognize our fire explorers.
Fantastic. Good evening. My name is Lieutenant Zach Solis, and for over 20 years, the Davenport Fire Department has been involved with educating area youth on career path firefighting. Previously led by Lieutenant Mark Kekert, Captain Bob Boares, and Fire Chief Mike Carlston, the DFD Explorer Program provides hands-on education and information for interested youth ages 14 to 20 years old. Tonight, I have the privilege of introducing the Davenport Fire Department's 2023 Explorers: Jess Young, Gage Musman, Chloe Lovelace Duran, Dylan Gedet, and Brian Koopman. These individuals come from different backgrounds, schools, ages, but they have one common goal of learning about how the DFD operates. Over the last several months, the explorers have visited various fire stations and had hands-on training related to fire extinguishers, CPRs, air packs, air packs and masks, and hazardous material. Later this year, they will explore boat training, fire operations, and most importantly, fire prevention. I would now like to recognize these explorers, and we'll do a little photo op. Where would you like us, Jerry? Okay. Let's have you in the front, three in the back.
That way. All right. Yeah. So I went this way. There you go. All right. I need one on camera. Yep, and then can grab one quick? Okay, that parents grab it?
While we step out the hallway, a couple pictures of the family there.
All right, we will now go to petitions and communications from council members. Is there anyone? We will start with Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you very much. Just wanted to remind people, the ward meeting is tomorrow at 6:00 p.m. at the Eastern Library, Eastern Ave. Library, and Nick Van Kemp will be the speaker, and everyone who's interested in the Davenport assessments are welcome to come. So please invite your folks. The other thing is, I just wanted to recognize that President Biden has asked flags to be at half-staff related to the gun violence we've been experiencing in this country. So I appreciate that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Alderman Jobchin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. On a little lighter note, I'm excited to be joining the ISRT. It felt good to pluck some litter out of our public right-of-ways, and I'll have to coordinate with the group president on when I can proudly display my membership badge, maybe during the next iteration of Sign of the Times. Thank you.
I like that. Alderman Condon.
Thank you, Alderman Grip, or Mayor Protem Grip. I normally speak as if the whole world is listening, but to this room. My wife tells me that there's some cause for celebration because the river's finding its way back into the banks, and the River Bandits game, I believe, is free tonight. So hold me back, Mr. Warner. I can't do this, but if you can find me, I'll buy you a hot dog. I'll see you there. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no others, I will just make one comment. Both of our proclamations this evening were recognizing our city staff who serves the public so well, both our police officers who serve us every day and are willing to sacrifice their lives for us, and our Public Works folks who show up and do work on a daily basis that keeps this running, keeps the city running. After being here for a while, I can tell you, we have a very professional staff. They work very hard, and they do a really excellent job. And a couple of weeks ago, maybe it was last week, Alderman Condon said that his pride swells with the river, and I agree. And the thing is, is that our Public Works staff has been there for the last month preparing for this and executing this, and as the river grows down, there are still things that need to be done. But the truth is, is that once the flood is gone and we're back to normal operating procedure, there will be other issues that we have to address, and our team always addresses them, and we certainly appreciate that, not just during months where we have an official proclamation. So, thank you. We will now move into our business for this evening. Our next area is individual approval of items on the discussion agenda, and we have two. Item number one is a Third Consideration Ordinance for Case REZ 23-01, being the request of Midwest Fidelity Partners LLC to rezonate 1930 and 1934 North Division Street and 1711 West Pleasant Street from R4C, single-family and two-family central residential district to C2 Corridor Commercial District. Is there any public with comment? Please step to the lectern and state your name and address or word, please. You have five minutes.
Good evening. Josh Johnson with Houston Engineering here on behalf of our developers, MFP, again. Been lots of conversation on this one. I'm going to address both the zone change and the alley vacation, just so we cover all that at once, to record. First question, where's the band tonight?
Baseball.
Baseball. Perfect. Okay. I got time on my hands tonight, so I'll see if I can make it. Anyways, we always like to, as a part of our process working with communities, I've said it before, we try really hard to work with your city staff and make sure that we can come to agreement and find a solid resolution all the way across our projects. And I want to thank Laura and Brian and Matt for being so helpful in that process. I don't work in every city that has staff that's as helpful as that, so I just, I'll say that 10 times over, but I can't say thanks enough to those folks for all the information. But in relationship to the zone change and alley vacation tonight, it sounds like we've got a potential for a third condition as a part of the approval. As I've stated before, we're in agreement with conditions one and two, and we know that that third condition, which would be that right in, right out on Division, is you all have reasons for that, and we understand that. It's not ideal for us, but we are committed to Davenport. We believe in the community, and we really think you're a great place to be. That's why we're here to begin with, and we think that location is a fantastic spot. So we're making a significant investment in Davenport, and so with all of that, I'm available for questions. I know there's been a lot of discussion already, but, you know, we kindly ask for your support for the zone change and the alley vacation tonight. So I'm here. If you have questions, just let me know, and I'm happy to come back up and visit with you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who's here to comment on this item? All right. Seeing no one, will an Alderman move the Third Consideration of the Ordinance? There's a motion in a second? And let's have discussion. Any discussion from the Aldermen? We will start with Alderman Dunn.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to say thank you to my colleagues up here who took the staff's recommendation of the right in and right out. I truly think, you know, it is a huge safety issue up there, and it may continue to be. But one of my biggest concerns here is I'm not looking at car wash. I'm looking at, this is a rezoning, right? So we're rezoning this piece of property from residential to C2, which makes this a bigger C2 property. And my concern here is, if the car, if we rezoned this and the car wash decides, hey, they don't want to build, what are we going to end up with there? Because it's already zoned C2, and we don't get to go back, and I don't want to end up with something that maybe the neighbors don't want, maybe the city really doesn't want there, and, you know, see, changing the zoning and making that bigger absolutely opens that up to more possibilities, like liquor stores, gas stations, you know. So I'm concerned, I'm concerned there, because if the car wash does back out, we have a property that is zoned C2, and we might get something we don't want by unintended consequences. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Alderwoman Lee?
Thank you. I can think I was second. First of all, I'd like to make a correction that was said at the dais last week and repeated in the newspaper. Based on the data provided by our engineer, there's two to three crashes per month over five years in that particular area. So that's a lot more than just five, which is what was said. And that's, and looking at the data, and I really appreciate that, you know, you provided so many intersections and gave us the rankings of those, because the one I've been talking about at Division and Kimberly, and this one at Five Points are running neck and neck, basically. So, yes, and I've been saying that the one at Division and Kimberly, based on my experience of living there a very long time, is a dangerous intersection, even with an entire, almost an entire block of physical median in that area. So it's still a dangerous intersection. So I have a couple of questions, if I could ask Josh to come up, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. I've asked three times. I'm just going to ask one more time. I asked about your business model as it relates to the subscription versus impulse, and I've gotten three different answers. So I'm going to give you a chance for your final and see if it matches any of the other three.
Well, and I believe that Graham corrected his response last week, and it's a 50/50 sort of scenario that we, that I believe he was using last week, and I'm going to stick with that. He's our business, he's our business guy, so, and Graham's been working on the car wash since he was 14. So the really cool part about Graham's story is, not only did he start washing those cars, but he's been there for the expansion of their company and has now been brought back in as a part of their team. But I'm going to stick with Graham's notion, because he's really the one I trust with those answers, so, and I believe last week it was a 50/50, so.
Okay. And can I, Brian, could you put up the zoning, please? Okay, so you can see Five Points there, and the area that, you've already got the C2, and then there's the R4 up to the north. Checking out the assessors page, there's one of those properties, 1926 Division, North Division, that doesn't seem to be under the same ownership. Do you folks own that, the 1926 North Division?
So we are working with Joey, who owns the bounce house on the corner, and from what I understand, you own the whole corner, you own all of that, correct?
All six parts.
Joey owns all of that, and that's in our purchase agreement as we, as we talk. Yep.
Okay. Okay. So you're planning on moving forward with that?
Yes. Yep.
Okay. And then, you know, I agree with Alderman Dunn. I'm really concerned with making it bigger, and why I agree with him, in addition to my concern with the traffic, is in your email to me that Mr. Westra?
Yes.
Sent, it said, "Without the access shown on this plan, unfortunately, we would not be able to make this investment." And we voted last week that that right in, right out is part of this zoning. So my question is, that raises a great deal of uncertainty for me in terms of what you're proposing to do, and also the question about the first-class retail experience that Mr. Westra talks about. So if indeed that got rezoned and you backed out like you said you would in your letter, or Mr. Westra's letter, and/or you decided that you would just sell it to somebody else, again, I agree with Alderman Dunn that making a larger C2 raises a concern for me, because there's a lot of things that can go in there according to our zoning that would not be appropriate or safe, I think.
So the easiest response to that is, one, I want to verify a question with Laura, if she wouldn't mind. Your land use plan, future land use plan that you all have adopted, actually calls for those three parcels to be commercial zoning. Is that correct? I'm just clarifying in the big picture so that we're all on the same page. That's the way I understand it, so I just wanted to make sure.
Laura Berkeley, Development Neighborhood Services, yes, the future land use map does have that as commercial corridor from Locust up to Pleasant.
So the reason I ask that is, one, whether you rezoned it for us or rezoned it for the next person, your council, whether it was you or the folks ahead of you, have already acknowledged that that should be a commercial zone. So that's a part of you all before we even came along. In regards to your approval of the zone change, you're putting conditions on that property, three conditions, as I currently understand it, one of which is the right in, right out at Hickory. You're requiring a fence and landscaping along Pleasant, which is, again, against your residential, and you're requiring a right in, right out, assuming you approve that tonight as a part of your discussion on Division. So no matter what goes in there, those conditions, unless I'm wrong, and I would hope somebody with staff would correct me, those conditions go with the zoning. They don't have anything to do with my site plan. So whoever comes in here later when we're done, they have to abide by those conditions. Doesn't matter if it's a retail center, doesn't matter if it's an auto parts store or for another car wash. So in my understanding, you've all sort of agreed that a rezoning, one, meets the land use plan, and two, now you've got conditions that you're agreeing to for whoever goes in there, whether we sell it or not. So I don't see us selling this. This is what I understand for my owners, is that this is a developed piece of property that we want to invest in. I think there was some discussion prior to that email going out and even after, you know, how do we continue to make this work? I can't speak to Graham's email specifically because I wasn't a part of that email, but I can tell you that ownership today has told me we're committed to this site. But regardless of whether we're committed as a car washer or another developer, the zone change and the alley vacation are all a part of your big picture plan. So just think of it that way.
And I will admit that a car wash is much better than what's there now, but I'm still concerned about the safety.
And I will tell you, I wish we would have, we have recently put together a video that talks about our car washes, and it talks about noise and access and circulation and how clean these sites are. You won't be unhappy with the car wash there. They're a great company, they do a nice job. So that's my, that's my story, and I'm sticking to it, but hopefully that will sort of resolve some of your concern and sort of address your questions.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, and thank you, Alderwoman Lee. We will now go to Alderman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. First off, I'd like to thank Director Oswald, Laura Berkeley, Brian Schatt, and Matt for their hard work on this project. What you guys have done is, like I said, very much thankful from the ward Aldermen and all that you guys do on a daily basis, trust me, goes, doesn't go unnoticed. And then I want to also thank Midwest Fidelity Partners LLC for believing in Davenport and working with city staff to bring such a luxury car wash to the Fourth Ward. So throughout this process, you know, my colleagues, you know, we talk about safety and, you know, bringing business to Davenport that creates jobs and taxes, so that way, you know, we can keep the resident taxes down. And I just appreciate just the whole plan that has been put together, and I look forward to working with you guys in the future to make sure that you guys are successful and it's a safe and luxury car wash that it's, that we're being told that it's going to be. So look forward to working with you guys in the future. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no one else, I will make a quick comment. So I did have several people reach out to me this week and ask about an exit onto West Pleasant Street, and I just want to make sure that it's clear that, you know, basically our code doesn't allow for the exit to come into a residential neighborhood. While that might be something people wanted us to look into to deal with the traffic issues, I think that maintaining the neighborhood protection
for case ROW twenty-three dash zero-one, being the request of Midwest Fidelity Partners LLC to vacate the alley right-of-way located west of North Division Street between West Pleasant Street and Hickory Grove Road. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing no one, will an alderman move third consideration of the ordinance? There's a motion in a second. Is there any discussion from the aldermen? Alderman Condon.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I'm going to try to make a point is that, as the viability of so many different business models are shifting in this kind of dynamic time that we're living in, the landscape and the literal streetscapes of our communities are changing, and these types of restrictions become more and more important as the make of the types of businesses that can fill these pieces of real estate feels uncertain. So you've been very complimentary of our community, sir, and I just ask that if your business model should shift, that you appreciate some of the restrictions that we put in place and know that they're done, and the spirit of making sure that all parts of our city are held in a high enough regard to deserve the best version of whatever you decide to put there, because it's not necessarily the nature of zoning, but I feel like anything could go there if it's done to its best version of it, of what any particular business could be. So thank you for taking the time to come and see this through, and I hope that you relay that sentiment to the other folks at your business.
Any other discussion? All right. Brian, please call the roll. Kelly?
No.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Cornet?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
And Dunn?
Yes.
So nine yeses and one no. Your Honor. All right. The ordinance is adopted. Next, is there a motion for approval of all items on the consent agenda? There's a motion in a second to approve all items on the consent agenda. Brian, please call the roll. Cornet?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
And Jobchin?
Yes.
And yeses, Your Honor. All right. The consent agenda has been approved. Are there any other ordinance resolutions and motions this evening? There are none. Is there any public with business? If so, please step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward, and you will have five minutes. Seeing none, are there any reports of city officials? No reports this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
We'll move.
There's a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Any opposed? There are none, and we are adjourned. Thank you.